For those of you enjoying lunch, please bless this food that you have provided. In the name of God, we give thanks, amen.
Amen.
Debbie, if you could pull up the American flag for us, it would do the pledge of allegiance. Everyone join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to introduce our guests that we have today. Our featured speaker today is Justice Pat DeWine. Thank you for joining us, Justice DeWine. Appreciate your time.
Totally.
We also have Assistant Governor Bruce Berry with us. Thanks for joining us today, Bruce. Appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you.
I also have my lovely wife and daughter Amanda and Debbie Boginski. Thanks for joining. We also have a Jason Chadock with us today. He's thinking of being a new member. Thanks for joining us today, Jason.
Hi, Jason.
I'm not sure. Is Kyle Gambini's here? We were going to send him an invitation, but I don't think he's joining us yet. And also, I'd like to congratulate Renee Natoli. She's now official member of our club as of today. So, thank you, Renee. Congratulations. Is there anybody else that has a visitor in the background that we don't know about that we should acknowledge? I thought maybe David had his granddaughter in the background somewhere again.
Not this time. I'm solo.
Okay. Today in history. Let's see. Well, I figured it was only fitting to talk about Groundhog Day today. Does anybody know when the first Groundhog Day was? Really? Nobody knows?
I heard it this morning, and I don't remember. It's been about 125 years, hasn't it?
February 2nd? Was it February 2nd?
You're right. It was February 2nd. But do you know the year, Joe?
1921.
1902. It was before he was born.
It was actually 1887. On February 2nd, 1887, Groundhog Day featuring a rodent meteorite is celebrated for the first time at Gobbler's Knob in Punxsutawney, PA. According to tradition, if a groundhog comes out of its hole on this day and sees a shadow, it gets scared and runs back into its burrow predicting six more weeks of winter. Wow. He saw a shadow today is what I hear. So, looks like we're gonna have six more weeks of winter, so.
Well, it was snowed in Punxsutawney, so it wasn't a big leap to make that.
Dave, are we still using the same groundhog?
Yeah, yeah. You know, it's just amazing. But yeah, this groundhog's well over, groundhog, groundhog is well over 100 years old and he's still, he's still doing great.
I wonder.
Does anybody know the average life expectancy of a groundhog?
Oh, Carl, you're great.
It's six years.
Really?
Yeah. Most of them, they kill on the highway. What's that?
On the golf course every once in a while.
Yeah, or on the highway. They're dead.
Well, since everyone's so, since everyone's so interested in a groundhog, I'll give you a little history of the groundhog. Yes, it lives for six years. They go into hibernation in late fall, and during this time, their body temperature drops significantly. Their heartbeat's low from 80 to five beats per minute, and they lose 30% of their body fat. Then in February, the male groundhogs emerge from the burrow to look for a mate. They're actually not looking for, to see if it's gonna be a longer winter. Believe it or, can you believe that? I thought they were actually gonna predict the weather, but they're actually looking for a mate. And then they go back into the hole and they come out of hibernation for good in March. So that's what a groundhog really does. I thought you'd all enjoy that.
So how many groundhogs have we had since this all started? My math says 21.
Really? Is that how many? 21? I'm gonna believe you, Dave. All right, one more thing I thought was interesting. The National League of Baseball is founded in 1876 on February 2nd, this day. The National League of Professional Baseball Clubs, which comes to be commonly known as the National League, is formed. The American League was not established until 1901, and in 1903, the first World Series was played. So there you go. Okay, special Rotary Days. We don't have any special birthdays this week that I know of, unless anybody else knows of any that I don't know. No anniversaries till next week. But we do have a date-joined Rotary. Derek Mercer actually joined Rotary five years ago today on February 2nd, 2016. So congratulations to Derek Mercer. Humor of the day. Mr. Conkle around to give us a joke? I don't think.
I think it's pretty close to when I joined this club last year.
What's, oh, really?
Yeah, it should be.
I did not see you come up on the, on the Club Runner.
Should be sometime soon.
Okay, well, we'll wish you a happy Rotary birthday anyways, Paige. And if you come up again when I print it up, we'll do it again. But congratulations, congratulations, Paige. All right, does anybody have any jokes? Because Dr. Conkle's not here. Nobody's got a funny joke?
Oh, John Bosco has one that I sent him.
He's shaking and said, no, don't do this to me. Okay, Wumbo Banda, happy or sad dollars? Anyone got a happy dollar?
I do.
Okay.
As mentioned last week, I was gonna have a happy dollar for this week, so that's going back one. I'll pay two. I couldn't say anything last week because it was a surprise for someone. My son got married last Wednesday, and he did not know about it. So his fiance, they've been dating, the 27th is a monumental day. That's when they met. A year ago, they got, he proposed to her, she accepted. And she wanted to surprise him and get married on the 27th. So for the last month and a half, we've been organizing without him knowing his wedding. And she wanted to get married in the new house that we're currently working on building for him. With no heat, we had, her father got ordained for 30 days, performed the ceremony with her parents and Karen and I. And so we got married in his house, and all the siblings came over afterwards and celebrated the marriage.
That is really cool. Congratulations.
That is so cool. Congratulations.
Thank you. And believe it or not, he did not find out. Nobody leaked. There were so many working parts in this whole process. He walked in his door of his house, and it was, welcome home. We're getting married today. Let's go.
What if he would have had second thoughts? He didn't have time to consider everything.
For probably 12 hours when he, after he walked in the door, he had this blank stare on his face.
I bet he did.
That is great. That's a great start. I don't know if anyone's gonna be able to top it, that one. Anyone else got a happy dollar? Well, I have to ask, your son was a happy or sad dollar?
It was a happy dollar. I'll put in $10 to cover for y'all.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone else?
I got one, Steve.
Yeah.
So I wanna give a big shout out to Derek Mercer, because a few years back, we had met and we talked about his facility over there in the basketball courts, and how that's something a lot of the kids in our area desire to utilize. The Y subsequently put a lot of money into it, made it safe so the kids could play on there, redid it, put lighting in there. And the Nordenia Youth Basketball has been playing there, and I spent more time than I care to admit dealing with basketball with my son and my nephews and friends' kids. And I could tell you that it's, it's nice to see that we have a facility we can use, and we definitely appreciate that. So shout out to Derek on that one.
All right, Derek.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Nick.
Anyone else? Okay. Then we'll move ahead and introduce our featured speaker today. Today, we have Justice Pat DeWine. Pat began his six-year term on the Supreme Court of Ohio on January 2nd, 2017, following a statewide election in November of 2016. An excellent writer, Justice DeWine is known for the quality and thoroughness of his legal opinions. His opinions reflect a strong belief in judicial restraint and his respect for the constitutional roles of the other coagile branches of government. Justice DeWine has served at all levels of Ohio judiciary. Prior to his election to the Supreme Court, Justice DeWine served for four years on the First District Court of Appeals. And prior to that, for four years on the Hamilton County Common Pleas Court. Justice DeWine, he is a juke professor at the University of Cincinnati College of Law, where he teaches appellate practice and procedure. In addition, he has taught undergraduate courses at the University of Cincinnati in Ohio Government and Politics and American Courts. He graduated from the University of Michigan Law in the top 10% of his class with Order of Cof Honors. As an undergraduate student at Miami University, he maintained a perfect 4.0 grade point average and receives summa cum laude honors. He was also a member of the varsity track and cross-country team. After law school, he was selected for clerkship on the United States Court of Appeals for the Sixth District. He served under the Honorable David A. Nelson, who had been appointed to the Sixth Circuit by President Ronald Reagan. Justice DeWine understands the litigant's perspective, having practiced law for 13 years with one of Cincinnati's top law firms, Keaton, Muthing, and I'd say Clay Camp, Clay Camp. Justice DeWine brings a unique perspective to the branch because of his public service as a county commissioner and a member of the Cincinnati City Council. Please join me in welcoming Justice Pat DeWine.
Good afternoon. Thanks so much for ha, for having me. I'm sorry I can't be there in person. I wish, I'm hopeful that we done with these Zoom meetings pretty soon. They've been, they've been great to kind of keep people together, and it's, there's something to be said for being able to do this from Cincinnati. But, you know, I don't know about you, but I really miss going to these meetings, so I'll be glad when we can get back to normal. Because I've been doing several of these, I've put together kind of an interactive presentation. This probably be a little more geared towards Zoom. My thought is that, you know, as ju, as judges, it's important that we try to educate people on what we do. Alexander Hamilton, when he was trying to get people to pass the United States Constitution, wrote the Federalist Papers. And what he said in the Federalist Papers is that the judiciary is the least dangerous branch of government. Well, what, what do you mean by that? So the least dangerous because unlike the, unlike Congress, it doesn't have the power to spend money. It can't enforce its will by taxation or by spending. Unlike, unlike the president, it can't call up the army to enforce its will. So really, all the judiciary has is its judgment, its, its will, the confidence that people place in it. So I think because of that, it's particularly important that we go out and talk to people about, about what we do. Because I really do think we are the least understood branch of government. So with that in mind, today, I have a little presentation on the Ohio Supreme Court. And I've tried to, I've tried to make it a little less abstract. So what we, what I've done is I've taken one case, case that was argued last year, and we'll kind of follow that through the court system. And kind of give you, try to give you a sense of what we do every day. Happy to answer questions. Don't, don't hesitate to interrupt me as I go through. I'm used to being interrupted, so you jump, jump in. So first question I get from a lot of people is, you know, how do you get to be on the Ohio Supreme Court? Unlike federal judges, we're elected. So we run for election. We run for a term of office. We hold six-year terms, so it's not like the federal court where you stay there for the rest of your life. Every six years, you have to run for reelection, and after you're 70, you can't run for election again. So you'll see right now, this is the makeup of the current Supreme Court. There are six associate justices, one chief justice, Marine O'Connor, who left to retire in two years because of his age, as I mentioned. Which is a pretty diverse, as far as the state goes, the chief justice is from Akron. Pat Fisher and I are from Cincinnati. Sharon Kennedy is from Butler County in southwest Ohio. Mike Donley and Melody Stewart are from Cleveland, and Jennifer Bruner's from Columbus. So Northwest Ohio's not represented well now, but other than that, I think we have a pretty diverse representation from across the state. Bigger question, though, is, you know, why does the court matter? Why does it matter to you? Number of reasons. Start with, we hear a lot about the federal courts. You always hear about the US Supreme Court. You might hear about the Federal Courts of Appeals, but really, 90% of cases in this country are heard in state courts. And in Ohio, the Ohio Supreme Court is, is the top of the pyramid, so. And so we set the precedents that are, that have to be followed in any court in the state of Ohio, in any Ohio State Court. I think on a larger level, why the courts matter is the courts are really what protects your rights and your freedoms. The Constitution guarantees a certain things, both our state and our federal constitution. Freedom of religion, freedom of expression, freedom from illegal searches and seizures, right to a jury trial, et cetera. But there's no enforcement mechanism other than the courts. And so unless the courts say when the Constitution has been violated, there's really no opportunity to protect our, our individual rights. The courts are important for the jobs in, in economy. Having clear legal rules allows people to invest and do business in the state of Ohio. You think about a state like Delaware. One of the reasons that so many, so many corporations are incorporated in Delaware is because they have a really good functioning court system. And businesses know that they can have clear legal rules if, if they incorporate in Delaware. So we, so same thing's important in Ohio, that you have to have a functioning court system for people to want to invest and do business in the state. Public safety. Obviously, there's nothing more important than the safety of our neighborhoods. And our courts are always going to be where, you know, where criminal trials are held. And finally, if you think about it, most times when courts matter the most is when you don't think about them. We have to have clear legal rules to be able to do anything as a society. And it's not that everything goes to court, but it's the fact that the courts are there. So I mean, think about the fact that you, think about buying a house. You buy a house, how do you do that? You, you fill out a piece of paper and you give it to the seller. The seller agrees to that, and you have a contract. Well, that would, that wouldn't mean anything unless you, as a buyer, could go to court and force that the seller didn't sell the house. You couldn't, you couldn't borrow money from a bank unless the bank knew that contract was enforceable. And also, the bank knew that, that loans you money and that you didn't pay them back. You could, you could go and for, bank could go and foreclose on that house. So even when we don't think about the legal system, having those legal rules is a, is a backdrop of critically important. So let me just shift gears and take a real case and talk about how it gets to the higher Supreme Court and how it goes through the Supreme Court. So I'm gonna tell you a little story about a couple flower shops that actually aren't too far from you. They're in Worcester, Ohio. One is named Worcester Floral Gifts, Worcester Floral Gifts. The other is named Green Thumb Floral and Garden Center. So our story starts when the previous iteration of Worcester Floral Gifts, actually was called Worcester Floral. The owner decided to go out of business. She'd had enough. She'd said, this flower business has been fun, but I'm, I'm done. And so she shut, she set about closing down her business. Importantly for our purposes, she had a domain name, a website. You go to worcesterfloral.com. She didn't pay the fees to re-register that, so she let it lapse. She started doing other things to shut down. And in the process, one of her employees decided that she really wanted to run a flower store. So she convinced the owner to sell her the rights to the Worcester Floral name and all the assets for a dollar. And she opened a new, a new floral store called Worcester Floral and Gifts LLC. So like same, same store, same location, just a slightly different name, slightly different owner. Well, in the meantime, I mentioned that the website name had lapsed. Well, there was another floral shop in town, shop called Green Thumb Floral and Garden Center, and they bought the website name. They went to the domain register, godaddy.com or a company like that. They paid their $150 or whatever it was, and they got the rights to use that name. So if you, for example, decided that you were looking for flowers in Worcester, and you typed in worcesterfloral.com into your web browser, it would look like this. So if you typed in Worcester Floral, you'd end up at Green Thumb's website. Well, guess what? The new owner of Worcester Floral did not like that very much at all. So what did she do? Well, the first thing she did was try, was, was go to the owner, go to the owner of Green Thumb and say, hey, using my website name. Give that back. And the owner of Green Thumb said, no, I bought this fair and square. I have a right to use it. And so there was some back and forth, and ultimately, the owner of Green Thumb said, okay, well, I'll sell it to you. You pay me $200 and you can have the worcesterfloral.com name. Well, the owner of Worcester Floral didn't think that was very fair, so what did she do? Being America, she filed a lawsuit. So she filed it in the Worcester, the Wayne County Court of Common Pleas, which is the county seats, Worcester's the county seat of Wayne County. It was heard by a judge. She claimed that Green Thumb had violated her trademark and that Green Thumb was violating Ohio's receptive trade practices act. That act makes it illegal for someone to use in advertising a practice that's likely to cause, or likely to create a likelihood of confusion or misunderstanding as the source of the goods or services. Well, it was a bench trial. There was, there was no, there was no jury. They opted for a bench trial. It was just a judge. Judge heard the evidence, and the judge said, no, this isn't a violation. There's really, no one's really confused when they, when they, they might be confused initially when they type in worcesterfloral.com, but by the time they get to the Green Thumb website, they know where they are. If they order, they order flowers, they know where they're coming from. So there's no confusion. This isn't illegal. Well, of course, the owner wasn't too happy about that, so she appealed to the Ninth District Court of Appeals. In Ohio, we have 12 different Courts of Appeals, depending on what counties you're in. So actually, the Ninth District is, is the county that you would go to from Wayne County, but it's also the county that you would go to from Summit County. So most, I assume most of you live in Summit County, if not all, and so if you end up in the Court of Appeals, you'll end up in the Ninth District. Well, the Court of Appeals is a little different, because instead of having one judge, you have three judges. You don't hear evidence. I mean, there's no introduction of evidence. There's no witnesses. It's just two attorneys arguing. Generally, for 15 minutes each, parties file written briefs. Court hears oral arguments, and the court ultimately makes a decision. In this case, court voted two to one to uphold the decision of the lower court. But in other, in other words, to find that there was no violation of law by using this domain name. So what happens next? Well, the loser can ask the Ohio Supreme Court to hear the case. Now, this is a little different than below, because everyone has an automatic right to appeal to the Court of Appeals. But the Ohio Supreme Court, you have to actually ask for permission to hear your case. So we'll hear, for example, in 2019, there are about 1,100 cases where the attorneys ask us to hear the case. They filed, we call jurisdictional memorandum with the court, and those memorandum essentially say why this case is so important that it should be one of the few the higher Supreme Court decides every year. And generally, when we take one of these cases, we're looking for something that matters beyond this individual case. So it's not generally enough just to say that the court below screwed up, got the law wrong. But there has to be something that's going to be, we think of, we call great public interest, meaning that it's gonna matter beyond the context of this case. So in 2019, about 1,100 of those were filed. We accepted 43 of them. So pretty, pretty long odds, but the Worcester Floral case was one we accepted. Takes essentially a judge's vote. There's seven justices. Four votes gets you into the court. So there were four votes to, to accept this case, at least four. So we decide, we decided to hear the case. So what happens next? Well, what happens next is the parties file written briefs. Each, the, the person who's appealing, the loser below, files a brief. Then the other side gets to file response to that, and then the loser below gets the last word, they have to file the last brief. Before I read, before we have argument, I read those briefs. I also have three law clerks. One law clerk is assigned every case, so my law clerk would also read, read those briefs and write a memo to me about what he or she thinks we should do. So I may, then I would probably talk to the law clerk. I may have questions. I may ask for more research. I may go read other cases that I think are important. But generally, I have my mind, not completely made up, but I have a pretty good idea of what I think about this case by the time we get to the next step, which is oral argument. So after the case has been briefed, we schedule oral argument. In general, each side gets 15 minutes to argue. All seven justices are there. And we'll hear arguments about two days, two or three days every two or three weeks. So most of the time, I'm not sitting on the bench. Most of the time, I'm actually sitting in this office, in my office in Columbus, reading and writing. But this is, but this was a day we had oral arguments, so here's what oral argument kind of looks like. So that's what oral argument usually looks like, and I have to tell you, I kind of miss being in the courtroom. For the past, unfortunately, since March, it's looked kind of like this. Here's the Worcester Floral case. So so we, we've been doing arguments via Zoom. It actually, it really hasn't been a problem. I miss being in the courtroom. We have a beautiful courtroom. I like the experience. But as far as what we get from the litigants, I don't think there's a lot of difference. I think it's much harder for our trial courts, which depend on having jury trials and being able to introduce evidence and bring in witnesses. So for them, it's been a lot tougher. For us, it's been fairly easy to move to Zoom. Although, like I said, I hope we're done with that fairly soon. A lot of people think that oral argument is really the most important part from the attorney's standpoint. But really, the briefs are kind of the main show. Oral argument is really a chance, uh, for us to ask questions. If you watch one of these arguments, you would see that the pretty hot bench, we kind of pepper the attorneys with, with questions. You know, it's a way to explore things that's, uh, maybe weren't quite clear from the briefs. Sometimes you ask questions because you want to try to bring out a point that might help convince your colleagues to see things differently. That certainly happens sometimes. So what happens after oral argument? After all our arguments, uh, we huddle, the justices all get together. We'll hear about three or four cases generally in the morning. And then after that, we'll go, uh, up to our conference room and meet. And tip, and what happens is we'll go through each case. We'll discuss, uh, what we think should happen in each case. We have a pretty good system, I think, for doing it. The chief will call a case, uh, and then the chief will say what she thinks about the case. And then we'll go through order of seniority down to the newest member with each having a chance to say how they think the case should be decided. One thing that's, I think is interesting about and that works well is there's an ironclad rule that no one can interrupt someone on the first go round. So if someone tries to jump in and say, well, why do you think that? Or no, that's wrong, or you're nuts, uh, you get cut off very quick. Which, um, it's, it's hard to get used to. I mean, I'm, you know, at least I'm the type of person that when someone says something that, uh, I really disagree with, I want to jump in or, uh, clarify something or explain to them why they've got it wrong. But we stick to that rule. And I think it's very helpful for getting through, uh, making sure everyone's heard, uh, et cetera. So we go through it once where everyone discussed and gives their opinion, then we have kind of a free for all. After we're done, then we vote, uh, starting, starting with the youngest or the newest member working their way up. And so we vote on whether we would affirm the decision below or whether we reverse it or do something else. Once that's done, we have to decide who's going to write the opinion. So this is, I, I think one of the more, uh, certainly some people don't know about what we do. You'll see on your screen, there's a dice game. And this apparently, I'd be curious if anyone's ever seen this before, but apparently it came out of some bar somewhere. And it's been, it's, you know, it's been around the Supreme Court for ages. I, I've tried to find one of these, uh, on eBay. I haven't been able to. It doesn't kind of look like it, but it's a, it's a leather bottle. You can't really see it's leather, but it's actually a brown leather bottle and you've got these seven, uh, beat up dye kind of thing. And so what happens is, is that whatever justices are in the majority, their dye will go in the bottle. So right now my dye is number two. And then, uh, the senior associate justice will roll the bottle and a dice will come out. And whatever dye will come out and whatever dye comes out, that person is assigned to write the opinion. But it's a little different than the US Supreme Court where the chief justice assigns, we do ours by lottery. It's a little more complicated than that because we have a system where you don't go back in the bottle until everyone else has gotten an opinion to write. So we even out, sure everyone gets the same number of opinions to write. But that's essentially how we do it. So in this case, I was assigned to write the opinion. Uh, here you can see, I just have the first and the last page on there. It's about thirty five paragraphs long. And we upheld the lower court and said, uh, the court was correct that here the, the standard is there has to be a likelihood of customer confusion. That's what the statute says. That means the customer has to be confused about the source of the goods and services. And here, there may be some initial customer confusion when you end up at the wrong website. But any, uh, confusion is quickly dissipated when you look at the website and you see that it, it says green thumb, not Worcester floral. So the people in this day and age are fairly sophisticated about where they end up on the internet. And so this did not constitute an unfair trade practice. So why do we write written opinions? Why isn't, you know, why don't we, uh, do like they do in Law and Order? A lot of times where the judge has just announced their decision. Well, I think it's important for our system, uh, to explain why we got to where we did. I remember we said that the Supreme Court is kind of sits at the top of the lower courts in Ohio. So we have to, we want to have written this decision so it's clear to courts below exactly what the law is, what facts in this case led to the result that we chose so that they can apply that decision in other cases. So if I'm writing an opinion, I think about lower courts, obviously. I think about attorneys who may have to advise clients going forward because, you know, a dispute like this wouldn't happen if the law was clear, right? I mean, if, if this presumably after this case in Ohio, there won't be this kind of dispute because the person will know that they don't have the right to take the website just by filing a lawsuit. They have to negotiate for it. So part of trying to do is make sure the law is clear. So for people and for attorneys who are going to advise them. I also try to think about the losing party. When I write, I want, I want the, I want the loser in the lawsuit to be able to pick up the opinion and say, it probably won't agree with it. They may not like it. They may be angry. Uh, they may be unhappy. But I want them to feel like that there was a reasoned process based on the rule of law that went into this. That it wasn't based on the whims of the judges or who the judges liked best or who the attorneys were, but that there was a process that was based on the rule of law and precedent. And I, I, so I try to write, I try to write in a way that's, you know, understandable, not just for lawyers, but also for litigants, uh, anyone. I, I want my opinion to be one that anyone could pick up and be able to understand. Here you'll see that, uh, there was also a dissenting opinion. I think in this case, there were six justices who agree with me. There was one who disagreed. And so Justice French wrote an opinion explaining why she thought I was wrong. So what's, what's the purpose of dissents? Well, uh, there, they, they aren't the law in that case, but you write and you think, you know, maybe sometime in another case, someone will pick up that logic and say, you know what? I think the dissent here was really right. We ought to change, uh, how we think. Some of the most, uh, important US Supreme Court decisions have been since that were later adopted by majority of, by the majority of the court. Last, close with, you know, why, why are there dissents? Why don't all judges see things the same way? Well, there's lots of reasons, but I think the biggest one generally comes down to judicial philosophy. What I should start by saying, we only take the hard cases, right? I mean, we're only picking out forty or so, forty, fifty cases a year. So we're not taking easy cases. So we're taking ones where there's probably room for a difference of opinion. And judges tend, you know, judges, I think are all committed to the rule of law, but we tend to see, we see things a little bit differently. I'm someone who my philosophy is, I think we ought to apply the law as a script. I just look at the plain language of whatever's in front of me, the statute, the constitution, a contract and say, I'm going to give that language its plain and ordinary meaning. Other people may have a different philosophy. Some people have more of what they call purpose, this philosophy, which says, okay, well, what was the legislature trying to accomplish when they wrote this? And how should I interpret the legislation to try to accomplish that purpose? My problem with that is that I think it really gives judges, uh, a lot of leeway and encourages them to put their own personal policy preferences into what, how things should be, rather than applying what's actually written. I think that we're not elected as legislatures. People don't vote for us because they want us to decide a certain result. We may not be the most representative body. Our job is not to legislate, but it's simply to apply the law that your legislature is written. So that's kind of my philosophy. I'll stop right there. Oh, but one more question I get a lot. Asking about how things work is, so can people appeal your decisions to the US Supreme Court? And the answer is it depends. Uh, if it's a question of federal law, so if we're interpreting the US constitution, then you have a right to appeal or to ask the US Supreme Court to hear the case. You have to do like in our court, you have to file a petition of certiorari and they have to decide whether to grant it or not. If it's a question of state law though, we're it. So this was, this was an Ohio statute. Passed by the Ohio legislature. We're the final word on interpreting that. We can't be overruled by the US Supreme Court. So, so here, uh, Worcester floral gifts cannot appeal because the only issue was purely a question of Ohio law. There's, uh, some contact information. You can follow me on Facebook, Twitter. You can email me. I personally, I'm always interested in feedback. Uh, you know, these are a little harder because you don't get as much feedback from people as you do when you're in person. So I'm always interested in people's thoughts about, uh, what's, you know, what's good, what's bad, what's boring, uh, anything else as well. And I'm happy, I don't know how we are time wise, but I'm happy to answer questions, uh, if there's time for that.
Yeah, Justice, I have actually two questions. Uh, the first one has to do with the public school funding. It's my understanding that many years ago, the Ohio Supreme Court said that the current, uh, funding, uh, is unconstitutional as it relates to, uh, property taxes. And I'd like your opinion as to why it's taken so long for the state of Ohio to, uh, come up with another way to fund public schools. And my second question has, I'd like your opinion on the age of seventy is, is being the age limit. You cannot run, uh, for a judge in the state of Ohio if you are over seventy. Does that still make sense today with more and more people living to well beyond the age of seventy? Thank you, Justice.
Those are, those are both excellent questions. As far as the property or the school funding formula, you're correct. Uh, in the nineties, uh, isn't that, yeah, in the nineties, there were, uh, there was, there was a lawsuit filed alleging that Ohio school funding scheme violated, uh, the provision of the Ohio constitution that requires the legislature to create in a I think the words are fair and efficient scheme for funding schools. The court found, uh, the, the scheme unconstitutional. They sent it back to the legislature to change it. The legislature made some changes. You may see, and actually that process went back and forth, I think, three times between the court and the legislature. There was a big building boom in the mid nineties. So I don't know your local schools, but you may have seen that. A lot of that was a result of court finding the scheme unconstitutional. But ultimately, the court, the court, and this was well before I got there. The court kind of got out of the business of trying to, uh, dictate how the legislature changed the school funding for, school funding. And the problem is, uh, that courts, the court, the courts are, are good at saying that things are unconstitutional. They're not really good at legislation. They're not, they're not good at saying, and we're not equipped to say, okay, well, you should fix this by raising property taxes, uh, across the state or imposing a statewide sales tax or doing some other, uh, funding, funding mechanism. You know, ultimately those have to be, I think legislative decisions. So I think the court, uh, after, you know, after kind of being involved in the area, uh, for a while in the nineties, only decided that this was something that was going to have to be cured by the legislature that really couldn't be cured, uh, by a court ruling. As far as, uh, the seventy age limit, I think, you know, I think, I actually think having some age limits, uh, is not a bad thing. I, I would actually, I've actually come to the conclusion that for the US Supreme Court, having, you know, some kind of limit, you know, may, you know, long limit, maybe twenty point, they're pointing for twenty five years or thirty years or something would be a good thing. As far as Ohio, uh, the rule we have now is that you can't run after you're seventy. I think it would be worthwhile to raise it. Uh, I'm not sure how much, uh, maybe you raise it to seventy five. I think that, uh, but I think there's probably some value in raising it. You know, it's a two edged sword. There are a lot of people who can be very good judges past seventy. I think the reason you have the rule is, and it's probably more geared towards maybe smaller places where, you know, if you, if you're from a small county in Ohio, you know, it's a pretty small legal community. So probably it's pretty hard to say to that judge, hey, you know what? It's time to go. You've been here. You know, you're just starting to lose it a little bit, you know? And so I think that that's probably why we have the rule, uh, for those kinds of situations. But, uh, I think that, like I said, I think, I think it'd be worthwhile to raise, to raise it at least a little bit. There was an effort ten, fifteen years ago. It was put on the ballot, part of the constitution. So the only way it can be changed is by the voters constitutional amendment. And I think, and I, I think the, uh, what was put on would have raised to seventy nine, which the problem was seven, or we raised it to eighty. The problem with that is that the rule is, it, it sets up so you can't run after you're that age. So even though the rule is seventy now, you could theoretically, depending on when your election cycle was, serve until you were seventy five. If you go elect to sixty nine, six year term, you should be seventy five. So under the reform that was proposed, it was raise it to eighty, which meant that people could actually serve. Some people would be able to serve till they're eighty five. I think my people thought was too high. So maybe some kind of more marginal, uh, change would work. What else?
A question in the sample case that you, uh, talked about. Uh, I think you said that, um, they could have bought the domain name for twenty five hundred dollars. How, how much was spent through the appeals process? And I noticed now that I just looked it up. They're actually using Worcester flower and gifts. So they've, they've got their own domain name, but just wonder, how much did they spend to not get the domain?
You know, I, I don't know what their legal fees were, but I would just ballpark. You know, I, I would, I haven't practiced law now for a while, uh, so I'm getting worse at this. But, you know, I don't think that you, you would be able to do the appeal for, you know, less than ten to fifteen thousand dollars. And I would think that you're going to spend that same amount at least to the, you know, taking it to the Ohio Supreme Court. And those are probably pretty low numbers. So they spent a lot more than they could have negotiated and bought this, uh, which, one thing that you, that I learned being a judge is that when it comes to litigation, a lot of people's motivations aren't rational, or at least not strictly rational in the kind of quantifiable in money sense. There's a lot of, there's a lot of emotion involved. You know, a, a lot of cases really should settle when you, when you just ballpark out, okay, who's going to pay what? How much you're going to end up with? What are your chances of winning? You know, if you were completely rational, sure, I'd say wherever you would sell those cases. But people gets, people get vested sometimes, you know, they, they don't, you know, they feel like, and rightly so, it's their right. They, you know, I have a right to do this. Uh, I'm not going to, I'm not going to let them so and so do this to me. This is America, et cetera, et cetera. And so you get, you know, you get, you get, you get a lot of decisions made in litigation that aren't strictly rational from a financial standpoint. But I don't know anything about this case. I'm, I'm, I don't mean to say that about the parties. There may be some other reason I don't know about, knows.
Okay. Thank you, though. Very interesting insights.
Yeah. Hi, Justice Dwyane. Uh, this is Jacob Carino over here. Not going to press you about anything law, but I graduated Miami, uh, from Miami in two thousand eighteen. So
Excellent.
loving honor over here. Thank you for your
I had a son that graduated, I think, the same year.
Oh, no way.
Yeah.
Well, and thank you again for your family's commencement speech for, uh, the year of twenty twenty, with that being delivered virtually. It was about the best thing that I think anyone in this country can get, uh, for a commencement speech. So thank you for that. And very, very impressed by a four point O, uh, continued throughout Miami. So congratulations on that too.
Thanks.
Any relationship to any other Dwyans?
Yes, the governor's my father, so.
Just curious, nothing makes
Absolutely, absolutely.
Justice Dwyane, I just want to thank you and tell you that when you talked about those little numbered dyes that you, you said you couldn't find. I immediately saw that. It's, it's called Pilpore. It's a I immediately saw that. It's, it's called Pill Pool. It's a, it's a game play when you shoot pool. And I, I looked it up on Amazon and they are on there if you are still looking for those.
Oh, is that right? It's called Pill Pool?
Yeah, pill, like a pill you take, like an Advil.
Huh, okay.
Shake it up and the number you have is the number you don't want to go into the hole because as long as your number's on the table, you remain playing.
Oh, that's how that works.
Yes, sir.
I, I learned something today, so thank you.
Anybody else? Well, thank you, Justice Dwyane. Uh, we really appreciate it. That was, that was really interesting, the, the sample that you brought up. Me, being the businessman, I was wondering how that was going to work out that, that uh, cause you're, we're always making sure that our website doesn't lapse and it, it's just so important. So I was curious how that was going to work out. So that was very interesting. Thank you. And by the way, as a token of our appreciation, we have this uh, rotary Tumblr that we would like to send you. As a token of our appreciation, um, now I can either send it to uh, um, uh, so Paul at his Columbus office or if you want.
That's fine. Yeah, just send it to the court. I'll be, you know, I'm in there regularly, so.
All right, I'll send it to Paul's attention then.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks again for joining us. And we're going to go over a couple rotary things here now. If you'd like to stick around, you're more than welcome to. Uh, if you want to jump out, uh, again, we thank you for your time. All right, everybody, just a couple announcements. Um, the dictionaries for third graders, they've all been distributed now. So uh, we're starting to get some uh, nice feedback from the elementary schools and the principals and they're all having a lot of fun with them. Joe, uh, I did have one question. Uh, we've been getting some pictures and we're not sure if we're allowed to post those on our Facebook page or not, uh, but uh.
Go ahead. If you're getting pictures, they've all been screened and allowed to be on social media.
Okay, perfect. That was a quick question I had for you. Thank you. Uh, the storefronts, we're just waiting for the weather to break and we'll start installing some more of those. Uh, Dave's been trying to get me out there, but I just told him, you know, hold off till it gets really cold. Um, next week we have uh, our speaker is going to be Casa Gal and I had, okay, that's actually stands for Court of Appointed Special Advocates for Children. Uh, so that's going to be next week. That should be very interesting. Uh, our next board meeting is going to be February twenty-sixth, after I get back from my snowmobile trip. And I'm going to give the floor to Dave Fike right now. Uh, he's going to uh, talk about a reverse raffle. Go ahead, Dave.
All right. Everybody's selling, of course, because I only have twelve tickets in my hand that are available. Steve is totally out, so if you need a ticket, now's the time to uh, reach out and get the last twelve.
Steve, do you need some more tickets?
What's that?
I said, do you need some more tickets? I got some for you.
You haven't sold your ten tickets yet, Jacob? I'm very disappointed.
I'm working on it.
All right, well, with that being said, we want to make sure with, when there's two weeks to go, anyone that can't sell them, get them back to us because we don't want a last minute flood of tickets coming in, then we need to try and move them. Um, but uh, Dave, when you're out, throw me an email and we can have Debbie put out a mass email saying, hey, we have a couple of tickets that are available. Who needs them?
Okay.
I need four.
Okay, you got four. I'll have them. Do you want me to drop them off at your office?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
I'll do that uh, tomorrow morning.
Okay.
I'll take four as well.
Okay, drop them off at your store?
Yes, please.
Tomorrow morning.
Okay.
Have uh.
Eight.
Four left.
No, four left, yeah.
Steve, where's your math?
That's where I depend on you, Dave.
Okay, moving on for, from that, uh, so everything's going good. Uh, is everybody probably seen the email uh, that just came out eh, from the uh, district and international, uh, up until the end of the year, we're going to be going uh, virtual. So I think our decision to go virtual on the reverse raffle was a good decision. And uh, it is going to be a new process for us, so uh, we got to work that out. So Steve and I have been e- texting back and forth, uh, talked about getting a committee together. That's also going to be present at the um, specialty Lutherkins where we're going to do the virtual uh, raffle. I want to do a mock virtual and try to work through all the what ifs, how comes, and try to forecast what kind of questions we're going to have. So I'll be reaching out via email to people I'd like to have on this committee. A lot of them are experienced in the uh, rotary, so they need, know a lot of the questions that come up during the process. Uh, so that should go out today, so be looking for your emails. To mention a couple of names, I think I had, uh, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, John Bosco, Peggy Spragons, Jacob Carneau. And I'm drawing blanks myself, Steve. My wife actually wanted to help, so I think she's going to be the one verifying the balls as they come out because we can be close proximity. Uh, but we'll have social distance at the uh, virtual program. But I'll need the normal people monitoring and it'll be slightly changed because we're not going to be doing sideboards. We're not going to be doing fifty-fifty because we just haven't been able to work out a way to process all that and get paid and be able to contact people. So I think that's everything I had.
Well, one more thing, we are going to be giving away gift cards and maybe gift baskets. Uh, so we're going to start taking uh, collections for gift cards. So you know, we try to do what every ten numbers, we give away a gift card.
Yes, thank you, Steve. Uh, Peggy actually worked out for that. I think there was total of twenty-one, if I remember correctly, needed twenty-five dollar uh, gift cards. So if anybody has a twenty-five dollar gift card available, uh, just send me an email or text and I could either pick it up or make arrangements to get it.
Um, I will have two of them available for you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Um, so, so, so that we uh, re- reconcile, Dave, uh, on the sponsorship, can you text me or email me uh, where you want me to send that to?
Sure, uh, I would have to check. I have not seen an invoice yet, so I'm assuming it might have gone straight to Tim.
Okay. You just kind of let, let, let me know when you, when you do get it or if you speak with Tim so that we can reconcile it pretty fast.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, one last thing, and John and, and uh, Paige, you may know this. Uh, we're going to want to add some things to our Facebook page once this is all said and done. Um, just uh, uh, that it's happening, the Rotary Reverse Raffle, along with something to do with a, you know, often uh, facts, you know, questions. Um, who can post that, John Forrest? Can you do that or Paige?
I can do it, but I want Paige to do it. And I, I see she's left here, so I'll reach out to her. So make sure you send, send her everything that you want to put on Facebook.
Yeah, we thought it was really interesting. I, uh, actually I can give my wife credit for this. She was doing some research and uh, uh, Mount St. Mary's had a frequently asked questions on their website and it was fabulous. It basically, and we can probably plagiarize it because it was exactly the questions that people are probably going to ask with this reverse raffle doing virtually. Uh, so we want to get that posted on our website. All right. One more, is that everything, Dave? We good?
I believe so. Thank you.
Okay. Just one last thing, articles, uh, we're publishing some articles uh, at Nerdonia now and uh, uh, Nerdonia Hills uh, news and trying to get ahold of the newsletter um, about the donations we made to uh, uh, the Emergency Assistance Center and Campus Life. So we're getting a little recognition there. We're putting it out there. So you'll probably see a couple of pictures of the big check uh, on some of the local newspapers. So with that being said, I think that's everything. Debbie, if you could pull up our four-way test and everyone join me?
Debbie, real quick, just to confirm, did you get that email that I sent you over for Beth who's speaking next week?
Well, you're muted, Deb. You want me to unmute you? I'm a co-host.
Go ahead. Steve, you're better.
It says S to unmute. It won't let me.
She can't figure it out.
Gotta love technology.
I'm sorry I asked.
Yeah. No. No, I um, had opened up that file and now it's not open, so I need to. Here we go. If I can get back to you guys. There it is. Okay.
Yay.
Okay, everyone join me in the four-way test, please, of the things we think say or do.
Things they do.
First, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all?
If they're all concerned.
Third, will it build goodwill and better friendship?
Will and better friendships.
Fourth, will it be beneficial to all?
Beneficial to all concerned. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, everybody. Sorry we ran five minutes over, but there's a lot of things to go over and we had a great speaker. Did uh, did uh, Jacob, did Debbie answer your question?
Did, did you get that email that I forwarded you?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Perfect. Everyone have a great day and enjoy the cold weather and snow. Happy Groundhog Day.